Good evening, citizens of Linden. Collegiate Board members, school staff, school administrators, to our councilor, to the people at home. Thank you. Today is April 28th, and this is the regular business meeting for the Linden Board of Education. Before we start, I would like to invite all of you to please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, can you please read this statement of adequate notice?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and February 14th, 2022, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, and a clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time.
Thank you. Please, roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes, eh?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Present.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Present.
Mrs. Fleming?
Present.
Ms. Gilliam?
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Rivas? Here. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I will ask any of our board members to please read approval of minutes motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the tentative budget meeting held on March 23rd, 2022, and the combined work session, regular meeting held on March 31st, 2022.
There's a motion on the floor. Can... Any second?
Quick question.
Yes.
Didn't, um, we hold off on the tentative budget?
No.
Oh, no, this was a previous...
You voted yes on the tentative budget.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm good, I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the floor. Does anybody will second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor being second. Any discussion before we can go to a roll call? We know discussion, Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Abstain.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Abstain.
Ms. Gilliam?
Abstain.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Abstain on the tentative budget and yes on the work in regular meeting.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. At this time, and continuing with our agenda, I would like to say hello and to ask our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Hello, Mr. Rivas. How are you? Good evening, Linden community members, the Board of Education, teachers, parents, students, Mayor Armstead. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. I am very proud to announce that our district has once again been recognized among the best communities for music education in the nation. I think that deserves an honorable applause. This is the eighth year in a row that we have received this wonderful honor. It is a testament to the hard work of our music teachers and all of our staff, led by Supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts Matthew Lorenzetti. Is Mr. Lorenzetti here this evening? If he is, please stand. If not, congratulations, sir, and thank you. And most of all, all of our students. Linden is one of just 45 communities to be selected in New Jersey and one of just four here in Union County. In keeping with that theme, I am excited that we are starting our spring concert and arts showcase to... for all of our schools. Last night, I had the honor and privilege to attend the Linden High School School Dance Concert, where teacher Barbara Brady and her dancers did a wonderful, wonderful job. The concerts will run over the next few weeks throughout the district. The full schedule is available in our Linden Celebrates newsletter, which you can find on the table next to the podium. And congratulations to 10 orchestra students from McManus and Soul Middle Schools and School Number Two for being chosen for the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Honors Orchestra. The students were selected because of their abilities and work ethic. They worked for three weeks before joining their peers from other schools for a day of rehearsing and performing. Finally, I'm happy to announce that we are ready to launch our district's new mobile app, where staff, students, and families will be able to get district news, information, and alerts on their mobile devices. The app is integrated so parents can log in to get information specific to their student and can sign up to follow the students of their choice. The app is currently live in the App Store and Google Play. Just search for Linden Public Schools and download. You'll be hearing much more in the coming days about the app, what the app offers, and how to get it and use it. Thank you to Dr. Susan Alavero, Slavic Pajak, and Gary Miller for their work over the last year to get the app up and running. This was a part of our five-year strategic plan related to increasing communication and student and community engagement. Last but certainly not least, before I announce retirements, I do want to recognize, and this is not my last item, but I do want to recognize our teachers and paraprofessionals of the year. So on behalf of the Linden Board of Education, we would like to congratulate the following teachers who have been selected as Governor's Educator of the Year. When you hear your name called, if you could please come to the podium, we have a certificate thanking you for your hard work and your service to the district, and we would like to also give the Board of Education an opportunity to take a picture with you. From School One, we have Michelle Patadova, teacher of Grade Two. From School Number Two, Wendy Squalia, teacher of kindergarten. From School Number Four, Gina DeVito, teacher of Grade Two. School Number Five, Elena Sandoval, teacher of Grade Four. From School Number Six, Donna Diddy Young, teacher of Grade One. Number Eight, Joan Dolan, teacher of kindergarten. From School Number Nine, Teresa Rogakos. Guys, who else are here? School Number Ten, Allison Smith. From McManus Middle School, Patricia Klingert. Soul Middle School, Kimberly Light. And from Linden High School, Lynn Lynn Hill. I can't say this without gender bias. Congratulations, ladies. Job well done.
All of us are doing this? How are you gonna do this?
It's coming up here, yeah?
Who's Gary gonna take picture?
Yeah, I see him up there.
Yeah, working with the IEP here, Michelle.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, on behalf of the Board, Linden Board of Education, I, Sam De La Cruz, want to thank you guys for the job that you guys do. Sometimes you feel like it's thankless, but this shows that it's not thankless. Thank you for everything you do and everybody behind you. You're an example to your coworkers and you're an example to the students of Linden. Thank you very much.
Next, we would like to honor our support staff. On behalf of the Linden Board of Education, we would like to congratulate the following staff members who have been selected as Governor's Professionals of the Year. From School Number One, Pagnilia Majad. From School Number Two, Karen Sales. From School Number Four, Mary Ann Pollini. From School Number Five, Jane White. School Number Six, Suzanne Ortiz. School Number Eight, Donna Longo. From School Number Nine, Rachel Cordero. School Number Ten, Jessica De Jesus. And just a point of reference, the aforementioned names were paraprofessionals. Rachel Cordero is a reading coach. From McManus Middle School, Ricardo Ciprian, school counselor. From Soul Middle School, Christine Urbancheck, instructional coach. And from Linden High School, Lauren Basio, child study team. Congratulations to the ladies that are here and to Ricardo Ciprian. You are wonderful, excellent, talented, valued, and loved, and we thank you for all that you do on behalf of our students.
It is absolutely amazing to look at all you educators here and to know that you guys are making the difference in the lives of so many of our children. You are setting... you are setting the pace. You are making the difference. Because of a lot of you guys, we are looking at future doctors, lawyers, professionals, because you are making it happen. And for the Board of Education, the mayor, the people of Linden, we want to thank you very, very much for the hard work and commitment that you are putting into your career. Thank you. (applause)
It bothers me so much to see you like this.
Oh, my gosh. She makes me feel that every time. She...
You don't.
I don't. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
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 Thank you, my garden. Thank you.
This is at the end. Executive. It's up to you. We can go into close right now and bang it out, or you can do... push it. I mean, it's just Rob. He's gonna stay here no matter what. So I'm picking you up. I'm not saying anything inappropriate.
All right. And last but certainly not least, I would like to acknowledge our retirees. 36 years as a mechanic for the maintenance department. Mr. Martinson, thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. Donald Rolovich has worked for the Linden Public School District for the last 36 years as a groundskeeper and messenger for the maintenance department. Mr. Rolovich, thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. Anne Taparowski has worked for the Linden Public School District for the past 25 years as a secretary. Anne has worked at the Board of Education Office and the Special Education Department. Thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. Sandra Hernandez started her teaching career with the Linden Public School District in 1995. Sandra has taught bilingual ESL and Spanish for the past 26 years at School 10 and is currently at School Number Two. Thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. Norma McFeely started working for the Linden Public Schools in 2008 as a custodian. Norma has worked as a custodian for 13 years at Linden High School, School Four, and School Five. Thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. Rosa Ramirez started her teaching career with the Linden Public School District in 1997. Rosa has been teaching for the past 25 years. She has taught Grade Five and gifted and talented students at School 10 and is currently the gifted and talented teacher at Schools One and Six. Ms. Ramirez, thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. And last but certainly not least, Rebecca Colar. Rebecca Colar started working for the Linden Public School District in 2001. Rebecca has been the school nurse at School Eight for the past 22 years. Thank you for your passion and dedication to the students and families in Linden. The Linden Board of Education wish you all the best. Enjoy your retirement. And once again, I would like to say Happy Professional... Professional?
Administrator.
Administrator. So many names. Administrators Week to all of our support staff, our clerical staff. You do a tremendous job in helping to hold the district together, and next week, we look forward to celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you all, and that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hazleton. We really appreciate the very detailed report, and we really appreciate all the teachers, professionals, and everyone who has been recognized this evening. You are the heroes of our school, together with everyone on our staff, the day after day, come in to do one of the most noble jobs that are there, is educating our children. As per agenda, the next item is an attorney report, and this item needs to be handled in executive session. So if the board members are okay, I'm going to leave it for last, so we can do executive session last. And I would like to start with education report for this evening. To our committee chairperson, the educational report, please.
Good evening. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of school and the assistant superintendent, present the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one to thirty-four, and I respectfully request a second.
Second. There's a motion on the floor being second regarding the student... the educational report for today's agenda and the discussion before we can proceed to vote. We know discussion, Madam Secretary. Roll call, please.
Ms. Pino? Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Thank you, board members. We continue with personnel report in the agenda. Our committee person and personnel report, please.
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of school, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I ask for a second to approve items one through twenty-eight.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor?
And it was seconded.
And it was seconded.
It was seconded. Any discussion before we can go to voting?
Yes. I would like to table two, three, and five on number four, page seventeen. Since we've been talking about the reorg and we haven't gotten any information on that, I would like to table and see if we can continue talking about those situations, with the reorg and the hiring.
Can you repeat the numbers?
Number four on page seventeen, number two, number three, and number five.
Two, three, five.
Number two, three, and five.
And number four on page seventeen.
All right. So we are in page... let's get clear. We're in page seventeen.
Item number four.
We're page seventeen.
Item number four is approve the following staff, and that is two, three, and five.
Two, three, and five.
So it's four, two, four point two, four point three, four point five.
And just to let you know, a reorganization will not impact your need for ESL teachers. That's always going to be a need.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the information. Okay. That is your motion. Anybody would like to second the motion, Mr. De La Cruz?
Second.
Before we can go to motion, I can also ask for a discussion on this motion.
I have a question. Question, question, question. I don't understand. There are two teachers of ESL, correct? Why are they being tabled to teacher's job? Teacher position, right? What does that have to do with rework? I don't understand that. We're discussing personnel. I don't get that.
As much as... as much as I would like to answer any type of those related questions, similar to the question made, we can't answer personal items. It's very hard for everybody to understand the limitations of the law that we, as a board members, have. There are conversations in private regarding many different items, and the reasons behind any type of resolution that any board member could have presented cannot really be discussed in public. So while you ask for that...
Come on.
That question... any other discussion? Yes?
Not a discussion. Something that I would like to be tabled.
Tabled?
Yes.
So we have one motion for table. You want to try to ask to...
Can I add to it, or should I wait till the vote has been passed to...
You could add... Councilor, give us a...
No, there's been one request to table. We can make another request.
We can make another request to table. So, yeah, you're entitled to make another request to table. Yes?
Let me just... curious. I don't know. I really don't know. On the teachers of ESL, Dr. Hazleton, are there replacements now, or is this for like...
This is for September one. We're in the middle of hiring. This is the hiring season, so this is when you secure your best and brightest teachers for September one.
Oh, I thought it was like now. I'm saying, why would you be tabling a teacher's position now when you need it? So this is for September one.
For September one.
Oh, okay. Now, I get it. Okay. Okay, good.
Mr. Rivas, excuse me. If I could just add to the context of that, as the board evaluates tabling items four point two and four point three, as it relates to our servicing goals, it is our goal to be able to comply with the New Jersey Department of Education servicing standards for ESL and provide two periods of support for each student at each grade level. That requires English language learning support, and so the hiring of these two teachers is critical to that overall servicing plan, regardless of what may or may not happen with some sort of reorganization. I also think putting... These are shortage areas for us, so not hiring today, April 28th, and putting these people off indefinitely will allow them to seek employment someplace else. And so I just think, to continue to evaluate, you know, what our needs are, I just want to reinforce for the board that it's really important for us to be in compliance with the Department of Ed and our servicing guidelines, and these are important positions for us at School Two, which is a high-need, high-priority school. So we have a job fair on Saturday, and certainly whatever proposed reorganization plan is in place, our intention is to be able to fill our positions. So, you know, we want to continue this good work.
Thank you for those comments, Dr. Baldwin. Any other discussion before we can go to vote of the motion, and Mrs. Sandra De La Cruz to table items four, point two, four point three, or four point four? table Items Four Point Two, Four Point Three or Four Point Five?
I have a question. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, so please correct me or direct me, but is it possible that we can go into personnel to discuss the matters?
Well, we had a personal discussions on the work session and again, unfortunately, this is something that we cannot discuss here in public, but tabling is something that in my understanding, as the Counselor provided me and helped me with this information, this is something that we're not necessarily bringing down. It's something that is going to be more of a conversation for the whole board and we certainly will have that discussions in executive session. So that is what tabled is. Am I incorrect, Counselor?
Tabling takes something off the agenda. There's no vote you can consider. I presume you'll consider it again at a later time.
Thank you. All right, Madam Secretary, roll call. For the motion of tabling item and personnel for Point Two, Three and Five.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
No.
Mr. Martuzzi?
I'm going to say yes on Two and Three and no on Five due to the fact that Number Five is a Five, Two, Twenty-Two appointment and, you know, but the other ones, as you said, is next year, so I can live with that. But the other one, I, no.
Thank you.
So I'm going, I'm going yes on Two and Three, I'm going no on Five.
Thank you.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Your turn. You wanted to table something different before we can go to?
No, it's okay.
It's okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Well, based on the discussion that we had previously and understanding the plans of this board, plans that they cannot be discussed in public, I would also like to table on this particular agenda, Four Point Six.
Fourteen?
Understandably so, there is going to be a lot of concerns of the reasons why the board asked for these tables and there are reasons that we wish we can share with the public, but there are plans in place that this board is discussing and I think perhaps that was the intention of Mr. De La Cruz with the tabling, but we'll all do fairness. I think that based on the plans that we understand, Four Point Six is an item that I would like to motion to be tabled. Respectfully ask for a second.
Now, what number is that, Mr. Rivas?
Anybody else have any requests to table anything so we can do them all in one shot?
What number?
A Four Point Six.
All the personnel agenda.
Same, same with Four Point Six.
Page Eighteen, the top of Page Eighteen, Four Point Six.
Four Point Six. Any one? There is a second? Any discussion before we can go to vote?
We might as well hold both then.
All right, Madam Secretary, vote on the motion to table Item Four Point Six.
Ms. Pino?
I don't understand.
Yes. Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
I don't understand.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fleming?
Can I ask a question? Is it too late?
No.
The secretary for School Two, is this an addition or a new secretary? I mean, the same secretary that they have?
Trustee Fleming, we're really, once we call the roll, we're supposed to vote yes or no?
Okay, yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
No.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Again, I'm confused again. This is the second time in two months, this has been on, this has been on our agenda and we're postponing it again. So what I'm saying, if there is a secretary needed.
Mr. Martelli?
I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote no on that because it's like the same thing with your last month and it's there again, again. I don't understand that. But I'm going to vote no, I'm totally confused on the whole thing.
Thank you.
Rivas?
On numbers, it's Number Four Six, correct?
Four Six, yes.
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on that. I mean, it's the second month in a row and I don't understand that.
And thank you for the comment and the concerns. As I said before, I wish we can provide more details, but details cannot be provided. So yes, I vote yes on tabling that item.
Just to all the board members, the process, the way it works, and you know that I'm not a stickler for, you know, rules of order. I grant you a fair amount of leeway here because at the end of the day, you know, we get accomplished what needs to be accomplished. That being said, once, you know, you have a motion and a second, there's an opportunity for discussion. If you have questions, let's ask them then. Once we call the roll, technically, it's just supposed to be yes, no, abstain or recuse. No added language as to why you're doing anything, no questions, just yes or no.
You can't make a comment on why you voted?
You can do that during the discussion period, yes. You can do that during the discussion period.
Oh, you can make a comment with your vote.
I didn't realize.
Because we've done that plenty of times and our lawyer said it was okay prior.
I don't know who gave you that incorrect advice, but they're wrong.
Sure.
All right. Let's, with all these items being tabled, and is there anything else that needs to be tabled before we can ask the chairman of the Personnel Committee to repost the recommendations?
The president?
Yes.
Can I vote no?
First, we have to have a motion to approve the items that they are still valid and then we can vote yes or no on roll call on any of the items that any board member should prepare.
I have a point of order.
Yes.
For the board president.
Yes.
Um, we expressed some things and I feel like some of those things were addressed and changes were made and now I feel like I'm in a twilight zone. I have no idea what's going on after we had a discussion amongst our fellow board members and then we're just pulling a bunch of teachers and secretaries and then we question why we don't have staff.
As you mentioned, a point of order, again, you are bringing me a question that I can't answer in this forum. I'm pretty sure that a held us question that you and anybody else will have will be more than able to answer in executive session. I so apologize that I cannot answer that question. I respect the comment made. Yes, Mr. Martuzzi?
Dr. Hazleton, I just a question. Again, I know School Two is a huge school. It's over 600 kids. I understand that. And now, have they been, are they been operating with just one secretary there for like the last two months or three months? I don't know that.
Yes, and someone who's been filling in.
So can we put, if we haven't decided on a permanent secretary, could we put a temp there or something? And there's 600 kids over in that building.
There's a temp there now.
I mean, I can't imagine just one, one secretary and a principal and a VP handling the everyday operations of a, of 600 kids. Can we put a temp person there or something?
It's currently a temporary person working.
We can.
We have been.
Oh, we have, we have one there. I didn't know that. Okay, that's fine. I'm good with that. All right, all right.
All right, for our chairman of the Personnel Committee, can you please make, read the motions for the personnel report? Please remember that when you're doing that, you will have to take out the items that they were tabled.
Okay. So again, the Personnel Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the London Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue. I'm asking for approval for Items One Through, One Through Twenty-Eight, including the tabling of Items Two, Three, Five and Six, and Number Four. I ask for a second.
Second. Just to clarify the motion, you're asking for motion to approve Items One, Two, Three and then Items Four Point One, Four Point Four, Four Point Seven, Four Point Eight, Four Point Nine, Four Point Ten, Five, all the way to?
Twenty-Eight.
Twenty-Eight.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody would like to second? Second. There is a motion on the floor being, there is a motion being second on the floor. This is a sign if there's any discussion. With no discussion, Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Oh, you have discussion?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I just wanted to verify. You just voided out what we just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
I am going to say yes, but I would like to say no to Items Number, Number Four, Items Number Four and Eight.
All of Four?
No. I'm saying yes to all except for Number Four and Items Four and Eight.
Okay, so Four, Four and Four Eight.
Four, Four and Four Eight.
It's Four, Four and Four Eight?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Berghammer?
I would say yes to all with the exception of Four, Four and Four Eight.
Of what? I'm sorry, I couldn't. Same one, I'm sorry. Ms. Centron?
All but Four, Four and Four Eight.
Mr. De La Cruz?
I would like to say yes to all but Four Point Four and Four Point Eight.
Mrs. Fleming?
The same, yes to all, but no on Four Point Four and Eight.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
I guess.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes, on all except for Four Point Four and Four Point Eight. Thank you, board members. We continue with finance report. Our chairman for the finance report.
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the London Board of Education for approval. I ask that One Through Twenty-One, I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor being second. Any discussion?
Only to table on Twelve and Thirteen and no on Fourteen and Fifteen.
Wait a second. You want to table something?
First thing is, yeah, just table.
If you want to table and then you?
And let's not do them individually again, so let's go around.
If anybody has any other tables.
Other than Twelve and Thirteen.
All right, so there is a motion to table Item Twelve and Thirteen. Is there any other motions for table, any other items out of this agenda? With a motion to table Twelve and Thirteen and no other items to be table out of this agenda, can I have anyone second in the motion?
Second.
It was seconded.
There has been second. Any discussion before we can go to vote? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
No.
No on all?
No, I'm sorry, oh, excuse me. Yes to all. I was saying no to withholding on Twelve and Thirteen.
We're just voting to table right now, right? No, we're voting on the finance.
We're voting on the table.
We're voting on the table.
It's a table?
This is a table.
I'm sorry. Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Now the items, Items Twelve and Thirteen has been tabled.
It's going to pass anyone.
I would like to ask our Finance Chairman, Committee Chairman, to redo the motion to approve or not approve the rest of the items.
Redo, okay, we're tabled.
Twelve and Thirteen.
Mrs. Fleming, it'd be One to Eleven and Fourteen to Twenty-One.
I'm sorry?
It'll be One to Eleven and then Fourteen to Twenty-One.
On finance?
Yes.
Yes.
Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the London Board of Education for approval, One Through Eleven and Fourteen Through Twenty-One. And I respectfully ask for a second.
There is a motion on the floor being second before we go to vote. Any discussion? Before we can go to vote, I'd like to make some discussions about Item Number Twenty. Item Number Twenty has been a, an item that have created a lot of a conversation among not all the board members, but many of the staff who is very concerned about the transportation of the children. This particular board, I'm going to speak for myself. Myself, as a board member, my responsibility is not only to represent the childrens of the city, but my family, my constituents. And I want to say to all of you that if you had any chance to be part of the work session, I created a lot of questions regarding this item because I understood that there were ways, perhaps better ways, to have achieved a better result, to get decided to be accomplished. And the reason being is that one of the things that I have said is that we need to be financially responsible for the city. We board members need to ask questions and when we ask questions and we receive straight answers and answers that are good answers to given to our questions, it makes it easy for everyone, for everyone, to make intelligent and proper decisions. Unfortunately, due to many of the conversations that we have, I don't want to call it discussions, many of these answers may have not been provided timely to us. And some of the things that I have said is that when we are asked to make decisions, we need to have information and we need to know exactly what it is. There is only one time for us to learn more than anything, but it's when we are in this table, that's what many people understand. But before we meet monthly, we are board members out there. We're board members 24/7, 365 a days and with that particular roles and responsibilities, we have the opportunity to ask questions anytime we feel like it, that we need to know information about a district. I have been one of the biggest critics about this process, but once I got information, once I received the information and once we get to understand information, it's easier for people to understand. Ladies and gentlemen, it's the great thing out there, information is power. I would like to say that not only based on my role and responsibilities, I have spent 48 hours doing research, working, learning and self-educating myself to try to not only apply a good concept of what we are deciding, but only to make sure that I protect not only the children of the citizens, but the finances and the taxpayers' money. Being said that, I would like to admit that after getting information, I have changed my mind. I think that this is the best process that we can get at this time. We understand that things have changed and prices have gone up and the last thing that I want is for each one of the citizens of London, fathers, mothers, hard workers, is to pay the consequences of what a $2.5 million increase in routes of transportation could mean to our budget. Budget, there is also a sensitive discussion that this board is going to, going to have within the following days. So with that said, citizens of London, being physically responsible is making hard decisions, make tough decisions and sometimes make decisions that our citizens may not understand because as we have said in many, on the conversation before, we have to talk about this item. There are things that we can comment in public and definitely not knowing everything, people can only make assumptions of what the things are really are. With the discussion of this is that I, many of you have seen that I have put a lot of pushback on this in the work session. Today, I come humble to say that based on my research, based on the educator self-education that I have to time and thank you and thanking the information that I have received, I have to be fair to say that after some back and forth, I was able to receive information that will allow me to make a better understanding of things. I'd like to thank you also to a board member here, present in this table, who had the opportunity to make time to have a conversation with me. I have changed my mind. So that's what's part of the conversation, what I said in this particular agenda about one of the items. Any other member has any other comment or discussions about what we are about to vote? Okay, with no more discussions. Okay, with no more discussions, we are going to be, make a roll call on the items that were presented previously. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Ms. Pino?
Yes, but no to fourteen and fifteen.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, no to fourteen and fifteen.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes, but no to fourteen and fifteen.
Ms. Centron?
Yes, but no to fourteen and fifteen.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes, no to fourteen and fifteen.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes, no to fourteen and fifteen.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes, no to fourteen and fifteen. Thank you, board members, for your votes. Buildings and Ground Committee Chair?
The Buildings and Grounds and Security Committee upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following motions to be, to the Linden Board of Education for approval, motions one through number seven.
Motion is on the floor, can we respectfully ask for a second?
A second.
There is a motion on the floor being second, any discussion before we can go to vote? If there is no discussion, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes, thank you, board members. Planning and Policy?
The Planning and Policy Committee upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval, the first reading of policy three, three, two, zero, purchasing procedures, and policy five, one, three, one, conduct and discipline. I will go ahead and read the purchasing procedures. You all should have received it in your packet, you want me to read this?
I don't think you need to, you need to read the, I mean, everybody has it in the packet, it was left out for the audience over there. The main change is to sort of avoid the situations like we had at the meeting on Tuesday, right, where people said that they didn't have whatever information they needed regarding an RFP, RFQ in advance, and then they needed, they wanted to see it, and not seeing the specs might have caused some confusion. Now, if the board can see these things before they go out, as a matter of course, I think it'll be a more efficient operation.
Thank you, excellent for a second for approval for item one.
I second the motion, any discussion before we can go into voting? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer? Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
No.
Mr. Martuzzi?
No.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes, thank you, board members. At this time, I would like to ask a motion to go to executive session to discuss the attorney report.
Motion to go to executive session for the attorney report.
There's a motion on the floor being second, any discussion before we can proceed to executive session?
I do.
Why? Why are we going to executive, we already talked about it on Tuesday, we have a hearing.
We have a hearing, and there was something else that we discussed in closed session on Tuesday that we say we had to finalize today, so there's two matters.
Okay, any other discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call to go into executive session to discuss the attorney report.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we will return for executive session. We are about to get started. Ladies and gentlemen, after completing the executive session, I will turn back to our councillor report, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did do our hearing, that's complete, we will be issuing a decision in writing on that one. The only other thing that I have on the attorney report is I'm going to ask for a motion to appoint the law firm of O'Toole Scrivo as special counsel to conduct a workplace investigation at a blended hourly rate of two hundred dollars per hour.
I motion to appoint the law offices of, oh, I forgot the name, Scrivo, the last name I remember.
What's the last one?
Scrivo, S-C-R-I-V-O, Tom Scrivo. Second?
Second.
Well, a motion on the floor being second, any discussion? We know discussion, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Sorry, just writing this.
Oh, thank you.
Are we doing the motion, we didn't return to public?
Okay, so let's make a correction.
Turn to public first and then.
Make a correction.
Motion to return to public.
Motion to return to public, anyone seconds?
Second.
Everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, with an aye, we go back to our.
Motion.
Motion.
I'll put that as number two on the attorney report.
Yeah, I think, oh yeah, that's fine.
That was who, Mr. De La Cruz, you?
Motion.
And Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer? Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes. Thank you, board members. At this time, we would like to open new and unfinished business, if any board member has any new and unfinished business that we'd like to discuss. Well, I'm going to use this opportunity to ask the district to please set up our next budget meeting for May ninth, as for what the regulations establish. And I would like to ask for board members that we have fourteen days for having all the questions, all the different information that you would like to request. To please make sure that you have your packages on the work session about the budget, it's a very sensitive topic, we have to talk about the budget and how we, we need to be financially responsible, and how we need to make sure that everyone equally, the budget is distributed and correctly to our school system. So we didn't discuss it on Saturday because we understand that that is a presentation that it will take one meeting by itself. So I would like to ask for the district to set up the hearing for the ninth of May. And for the Finance Committee, if you are, believe that you need to discuss this in another committee meeting, do not hesitate to let me know, I will more than happy to invite you to a committee meeting before the discussion of the budget. We know any other new and unfinished business, I would like to ask for board member comments. And let me see our roll here, and today I will start with Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, everyone, I'm just going to keep this very short and congratulate all of our awardees, teachers and staff, we thank you so much for all of your hard work. I've personally had the opportunity to experience Mrs. Dolan, my son had her in kindergarten, and she did such a great job with him. He entered into the school year right in the face of COVID, and he entered into public school virtually, and she made it so effortlessly for the students, and they really appreciated her. And as a parent, I appreciate her for all of her hard work, so thank you to Ms. Dolan and all of the excellent teachers and staff out there. I'd also like to, I'm pretty bummed that Ms. Kohler, she's leaving, she's such a great nurse, and I enjoy our conversations, and I know my son will miss her. I would like to say Happy Administration, Administrators Week, and also Happy Teachers Appreciation Weeks to all of you teachers out there. Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Ms. Pino?
Good evening, everyone, I just want to say congratulations to all the teachers and congratulations on your new contract, and we are trying to do the best that we possibly can, and it takes a village to make everything happen. It doesn't happen overnight, it doesn't happen, it happens one day at a time. You know, yes, everybody gets frustrated, and we have to remember that we are all human, and yes, we have to look at why are all the teachers leaving? Maybe they need to do a survey to find out why they're all leaving, maybe they just want to leave, we don't know, we just have to find out why they want to leave. We're doing our best that we possibly can, and everybody have a great night, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pino. Dr. Berghammer?
I want to thank you all for being here today, and as a parent, a resident of the city of Linden, I, I, we, we all have so much to do to get, get it right. When I sit here and think that a month ago I was celebrating the success of an athlete, and today I'm praying for this athlete and his family, this should not be happening. After listening to Dr. Hazel Turner Tuesday regarding the in and out of school violence, feeling the pain in her voice and seeing the tears in her eyes, I want to personally reach out to you and let you know that we care, and we do want to make a difference. Just like every concerned parents, we have children in K-12, and we are working diligently to help fix the school violence problem facing our nation. Reality is, the pandemic has affected us all. This is why approximately one-third of all high school students are experiencing poor mental health and other social and emotional issues. But working together, amazing things can happen. It is our hope that social and emotional learning be taught and communicated to every student, parent, and other siblings in the household. We all know that younger kids need to learn about self-control and how to share the way they feel with others without making people around them angry. But teaching this is so fluid, because two situat, because two situations, there's never two situations that are alike. The only hope we have is repetition. I would like to see parents becoming a part of the social and emotional learning goals, their children is being taught in school. Parents should be provided with the same resources being taught in school to reinforce those learning goals at school. I would like to see social emotional learning being part of every homework assignment. Students and parents should have the social and emotional learning exercises to complete with their children daily. Additionally, because our student demo, because of our student demographic, our social and emotional learning program should focus on equity, justice, cultural competence, and cultural diversity. I have been reading about the SEL Day Plan once a month at different schools, and I think this is an awesome idea. Because this day, because this day gives students and teachers a time to bond and detach from typical routines and witness the joy that, that we still share in our great community. As one principal said, Celebration Day helps reduce stress and allow everyone to stop and breathe. I want to show my appreciation to the educators of the year, the support staff of the year, the retirees who have committed their life to educating children. I want to give a shout out to our music department and those students who continue to show us all that no matter what is going on in the world, our students are accomplishing great things, and it shows us that there is hope left. No, no child should be afraid to attend school, and no parent should be scared of sending their child to school. Additionally, no teacher should be afraid of their students. School should be a safe place for everyone. If students and teachers are afraid, learning is challenged. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Berghammer. Ms. Gilliam?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming and staying as long as you have. I would just like to congratulate all of our retirees and our awardees, we appreciate you, and to our retirees, to the best of luck on your retirement. And in closing, I would just like to say that it saddens me to see so many of our staff members leave, when it was all of you who inspired me to pursue education. I just want to say I wish you all the best in your endeavors, you will be missed, and thank you for your dedication. Lastly, Happy Administrative Day. Our support staff are so amazing, hardworking, and passionate about our students. Thank you for all that you do, I take my hat off to you and simply say thank you to your commitment to the district, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fleming?
I would just like to thank you all for being here and staying so long, that's terrific, out of all of our meetings, we don't usually have so many people, so thank you for coming, and thank you for staying, and thank you for showing your support. Mayor, thank you for coming. Just Happy Administrators Day, week, I think it should be every day, but I would like to also congratulate everyone and the, you know, the teachers and, I'm sorry, I don't feel well, the teachers and the kids, and just thank you for doing what you do. Thank you so much for staying and taking care of our most precious people every day, you are appreciated, and, you know, I just want to say thank you, thank you so much, and that's all, thank you for coming here.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Mr. Martucci?
I'm good, everybody have a great evening, and congratulations, Dr. B.
Thank you, Mr. De La Cruz.
I want to thank everybody for being here once again, as always, thank you for your support. Congratulations to all the teachers and aides of the year, your hard work obviously doesn't get unnoticed, and I think this is the first time in a while that I see so many in a year that it's pretty, that's pretty, that makes me happy. So I know that teachers are actually helping our students and doing everything they got to do, and the aides. So if you haven't heard the song Hero by Mariah Carey, I dedicate that to all the administrators, teachers, and everybody throughout the Linden District. I dedicate that song, listen to it and listen to the words, because you are truly our heroes. And our retirees and the people that keep on retiring, it does go every, it looks like every agenda, we're getting people that are retiring and very well deserved. And everybody that retired this time around, it's a hundred and eighty-seven years of service. Thank you, guys, that tells you they're dedicated and committed, and it's time to move on, enjoy your pina colada wherever you go, I say you go to Aruba, I think that's a nice place to go, okay? Thank you all once again, can't thank you guys enough, have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. De La Cruz. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, I always says it's very hard for me to follow up after great comments of my colleague board members. I want to use the opportunity to express to our teachers, to our professionals, to our staff, that the people in this board who work together with the LEA in order to reach the agreement of the new contract is proud of what we have accomplished. I think it was time, it was time for us to look at the things that they haven't, they would not look before. And yes, we understand that time will pass, and there will be people that will try to complete the things that this board may not do. But what it takes from all of us is that we do the best we can, day in and day out, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's not on, not only when we get here on, on, on these chairs, on these tables, when we have to look at our emails, and we have to start worrying about information given about students, a situation that happens in our schools, or in our educational institutions throughout the city. I'd like to concur with my colleague board members to congratulate the teachers of the year, the support staff, everyone in the district out there that continues to do a noble job of teaching our childrens. That is of precious cargo for parents, and believe me, everyone out there, not only on, on the chairs, but here, will do anything that is possible to see our children succeed. Teachers Appreciation Day should be every day, should be every day, and that should be only once, it should be every day. And I want to say that every time I get here in these meetings and I get the opportunity to hear the public comments, this is the, this is the part that I enjoy the most. And I enjoy the most because we like to hear you, we like to know. And I want to say that every time I get here in these meetings, and I get the opportunity to hear the public comments, this is the part that I enjoy the most. And I enjoy it the most because we like to hear you. We like to know what you think. We like to learn from you. What do you think that we're doing, and how are you holding us accountable? But at the same time, we may not be understood in the job that we do out there, and that is something that we can't change. The only thing that we can continue to do is to do the best that we can and have a clear conscience that everything that we're doing, we're doing it for the benefit of our children, our parents, the parents of our childrens, and believe it or not, the teachers and the staff, because we are here for them. I want to say that I am proud to be a Hispanic member of my community, member of the Hispanic community. I'm proud. And many of you understand that I was not born and raised here in the United States, and as per life, I am getting to be part of the community of Linden. I am proud to be a member of the city of Linden. I have been living here for almost 14, 15 years, and I have to say that it's almost the same amount of time that I live in my country. So when you migrate, you really adopt the other country as your country, and I'm happy to say that, that I have adopted not only this country, but the community where I live. And I have to say that I will definitely, personally, not as a board member, will do anything possible out there to support my Spanish community to succeed. But in my role, it's not only about the Spanish community, it's about every community on the city of Linden. And that's the reason why I have to make tough decisions to make sure that every community in the city of Linden will be respected, recognized, and represented. Once again, there are things that we cannot share, but the only thing that we can continue to tell you is, give us an opportunity. Keep holding us accountable. Do not stop holding us accountable, and do not stop to give us the comments that you feel are warranted to us to hear, because that's the only way that you can, you can make sure that we're going to pay attention to everything that we do. With that said, once again, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You forgot Ms. Centron.
Pardon?
Ms. Centron. You forgot Ms. Centron.
Lamari.
I forgot Ms. Lamari, Centron? Ms. Lamari, my apologies. I was going through the, through the list. Thank you for the question. I will not close, and I will give the opportunity to my colleagues, Lamari, Centron, to close our comments tonight.
Good evening, all. Welcome. Thank you for staying this late. I would like to congratulate for the Music Education, Matthew Lorenzetti. Also congratulate the retirees. Thank you for all your passion and dedication to our district. Congratulate the teachers of the year as well. And I do appreciate everyone's passion and concerns. I understand the frustration with the transparency, but there are reasons behind it. That's the reason why we're behind in executive meetings and discussing matters which we were not able to discuss with the public. But we care. We generally care, and again, there's reasons, a lot of reasons behind everything. So I would also like to say Happy Professional Administrator Week, and also look forward to celebrating next week Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Ms. Lamari, would you like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, yes.
And if I could have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Second.
I knew you would do that.
There is a motion on the floor being second. Before we can go to vote, any discussion? Madam Secretary, roll call.
Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Rivas?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Until next morning.
Good night.